Executive session. The purpose of executive session is to consider the appointment of a Board of Education member. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Grozan. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Anagostu?
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
We will go into executive session at 7:02 PM. We'll be back. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Grozan, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? I would like to say on behalf of the board, we had a very difficult decision to make. And the reason we had a difficult decision is every person who applied was qualified to be on this Board of Education. Every person that we spoke with was qualified to be on this Board of Education. Our job was to find the best person to be on this Board of Education at this time. And I'm proud to say and I'm happy to say that we have found that person in Seth Roberts. But I want to thank everyone who did apply. And I want to let the community know that we are blessed to have an abundance of great candidates. And it was a difficult decision for us, but we came to consensus and we're excited to have Seth on the board for us. Any other discussion? Mr. Anagostu, would you take the role?
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. And so I now go to section B and I'll turn it over to George.
All right. Mr. Roberts, congratulations. I'm going to ask you to join me at the podium where I administer the oath of office. And from there, take your seat as a newly appointed board member. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio? And that you will faithfully and partially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of Strongsville City School District, Cuyahoga County, Ohio, to the best of your ability, in accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during your continuous and set office and until your successor is elected or in-qualified? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your board.
Appreciate it.
Seth, you got to run through the gauntlet.
So now that we are at full strength again, it's fitting that we review our district goals. Our three district goals are academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and student engagement. And I'm looking forward as a team, not just the board members, but the entire team, of fostering those three goals. And I'm confident that we have a good balance of skillset. And I'm really excited to have Seth on board. I think he's going to help us with community engagement just a little bit.
Yes.
And I now turn it over to Superintendent Raiba for recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. It is, January is school board recognition month. And so it's my pleasure to have worked many years with two of you in a new role.
Did you say too many years?
I didn't say too many years. I said many years with two of you. New role for Laura Michelle and Seth. How about getting a recognition on your first minute on the school board, man? That's awesome. But we do want to, you know, the theme of this year for OSBA is planting seeds of success. And you know, one of the things in whether it's our leadership positions as a district or yours as a school board, the challenge is sometimes you never see the results of all the hard work and hours and dedication that you put in. But it is true that you are planting seeds for the future. We're leaving a legacy for a different education, a premier educational experience all around for our students. By doing that through our three goals, as Richard shared, with academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. So to show you the impact that you have on our school district that may not always be outwardly visible, we have a little video to share with you. If you could help me out, Dan. So as our students share with you, thank you for the countless hours and dedication that you give to our district. It is greatly appreciated and it has a tremendous, has had a tremendous impact. And I know with our three new board members, we'll continue to do so. So I do have certificates, Seth. We didn't know who the candidate was, so we'll get your certificate to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to everyone and thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
So I forgot, as I move the table. As a symbol, as a symbol of the work that you do at the tree thing, we do have a little gift for all of you to keep in your home, to keep in your office, to keep somewhere as to the work that you're doing and growing on behalf of our kids.
Thank you very much.
Somebody, Aaron told me that these are money trees.
They are money trees.
So it's a little fitting, right? Yeah.
So if we, if we give them enough water?
You'd never know.
It'll take care of our funding issues?
Exactly. So that's our recognition. Once again, thank you for all of the work that you do. Continuing on to the superintendent's report to the community. Did want to give, a few months ago, we talked about student vaping, shared an update with where we were at with the board. Decided to stay the course with some of the changes we made in progressive discipline, some of the work that we were doing. So it was asked to come back in January, share kind of a mid-year update as to where we're at. So I want to do that today. So the first two points that I want to make is first is how are we doing in terms of infractions at the high school and the middle school? And so we shared this information before. Currently, up until a week ago, we've had nine student infractions of vaping, whether that be vaping, any tobacco products, THC products, whatever, just vaping, has been nine. And the middle school is still at zero. So as we take a look at this data point, this shares that there's been significant decrease in the consequences that are there. As I had a conversation earlier today, we are also realistic that these products are becoming a lot more accessible to students in a way that hides them from plain sight, whether they're building them into clothing, whether they make them look like devices. But in terms of, we have changed our supervision plan, we have changed our layout of some of our spaces so that students did not have spots where they could be outside of view. So I do believe that this data is indicative of the fact that the education, the progressive discipline plan that we've put into place at the high school and the middle school in collaboration, just not with administration, but our SROs have given talks to our kids. We've had education within our classes, that that's helped. In terms of, in terms of alternative consequences, we did share an idea that the high school had of providing an alternative. They have finalized the plan and a resource of what they would like to do. And so as you can see, what they're implementing this semester is an alternative to a full suspension, the full three-day suspension as well as the police citation. So as we know, in our city, vaping of any kind below the age of, was 18, it got raised recently, was illegal and would receive a citation. So our first offense was typically a three-day out-of-school suspension. That's what we implemented halfway through last year. What they're altering it to is a two-day out-of-school, one day in-school. And in that, they have in-school, they've chosen the program called Clearing the Vapor. It's a vaping education program. If students successfully complete that program, not only did they get to come back in school and not have to be out-of-school suspended for one day, but they will not be given the police citation. So you know, that's an incentive for our students and families. There's a, that citation comes with court, it comes with a financial penalty to it. So we're trying to deter our students in terms of their habits, their vaping. And so those are some of the things, that's what we'll change in the high school. And like I said, the discipline data is sharing a pattern that what we're doing is working to deter. It doesn't mean it's over. There are still efforts that need to be made to continue to educate our students on vaping. But that is the update I wanted to share. I believe that's the last slide, yeah, that's the last slide that I had. Any questions on the update for vaping?
Let's just keep the pressure there. I mean, with all of the media coverage, et cetera, I think it's helping that we understand the dangers of it. And we'll continue to be flexible, to be positive.
Thank you. And if things change, I'll keep you guys updated whether at a meeting or through board updates. The other thing that's not on the agenda that I did share with the board and wanted to bring to a little bit of an update here at the meeting is a new program that we're looking to start at the high school. It's called a media arts program. It would be a two-year program that would be open for juniors and seniors as well as an introductory course that is open to students in any grade level. So what we take a look at, if you take a look at the work that we've done through our Makerspace courses, if you take a look at, you know, our students that are doing the video tonight, the SCS TV streaming network that we've brought back. We have a lot of students interested in media, whether it be through messaging, advertising, developing video or audio messaging, podcasting. And we have a lot of the equipment in-house, but we don't have the course pathway. So as I shared with the board, one of the challenges that I gave to our curriculum department and our administration is to make sure that we're not creating pathways that have dead ends. So you know, we have courses at the middle school level that don't lead anywhere, or courses that are isolated in the high- courses that are isolated in the high school that don't lead to increased engagement or experiences. And so this media idea was one that we saw, we have a course at the middle school that's called Arts, Art and Music Production. They do some podcasting, they do some, look at how do we embed music with media projects, with digital projects, and kids really enjoy it. It's been popular since the time we implemented it when Jenny and I were at center years and years ago. But then they go to the high school and there's not really a pathway for them, other than one course. So this would be something that we feel, whether it be through, you know, sound and media or digital, it's a nice two-way, two-course pathway that they can go through. The pathway would be two periods a day. So if you look at like Media Arts One, that would be two periods. You look at Media Arts Two as a senior, that would be two periods. And then hopefully that will open up avenues for our students that wanna go into media production, or wanna go to sound engineering, or other programs that may be applicable. When we take a look at, so as superintendent, and the high school has recommended it, Erin is in support of it, Dave Binkley, our Director of Technology is in support of it, and I think it's a great program to add an avenue and a pathway for our students that's currently not there, and I think it's a need. But we also have to look at the finances of it. And when you take a look at the finances of it, there's two, two major factors that we look at. The first is equipment. What equipment do we need to get it up and going? There's some new, you know, we need computers that have a little more, Dave would know the technical term.
Processing.
Processing speed to do the work that it needs to do. We do get federal dollars, Title IV dollars, they're called, that can be used to pay for equipment such as this. So when we take a look at the upstart cost for the equipment, we can use federal grant dollars that we have, that are specifically allocated for needs such as this. So the, the equipment piece, and when we look at startup costs, there will be no cost to the general fund, to the taxpayers, it's coming through federal grant dollars. The other part of it is staffing costs. So we are looking at limiting this at this time to one staff member that would have that. So we would say, you know, if we're gonna offer a Media Arts One, that we would have to cap that class. If 40 or 50 kids sign up, we would have to make that tough decision of, you know, coming back and saying we need to expand it. But right now, our plan is, especially in the first year, is to start with just one section and have a teacher do that. So when we take a look at, once the program gets built to completion, that it would cost a full teacher to do that. Where is that money coming from? And what we've, what we're looking to allocate or to repurpose is, we are going to save dollars, as we know, unfortunately, the Air Force Junior ROTC program was deactivated. We do pay a portion of the salary for the two instructors that are there now. Those salaries would cover the cost of a new staff member that could teach this course. So in terms of what is the overall addition to our budget as a school district, at this point, there would not be an addition due to equipment being taken from federal grant dollars. Staffing would be just repurposed from Air Force Junior ROTC to the staff for this program. And so, you know, that, that's where we're at with, with the program. There are some next steps that we would have to do to get this up and rolling. And if we move forward with it, which I'm recommending, it's all based on the students, right? So this, it would be a part of the high school course catalog. Students would have to sign up for it. We feel that there's an interest there, but the students speak through what they sign up in terms of electives to see if there is an interest moving forward. So questions or thoughts from the board in terms of the media arts program?
I had one. You had mentioned that there's another class at the high school that's very similar to this. I think it's video technology. Would that stay in place, or would this, would this intro to media arts take the place of video technology?
So we're still working through that, but the, and I can't say that in year one, but the goal is that that would take the place.
Because it sounds very similar.
Yes. And so, you know, the teacher that currently teaches that does a wonderful job, but could then expand with what we're doing with, with metals and some of the other Makerspace courses. It would give us flexibility there. So the idea would be to move that over into this coursework, bolster what we're doing. Mr. Mueller, the principal there, has done a lot with, you know, video messages that are playing throughout. We'd like to start to see our students developing content for those video messages and develop the skills to do that, so ultimately, we would transition that over.
Has there been thoughts to take this kind of course and actually use it to cover school activities, whether it be sports, or music, or arts, I guess from a standpoint of building the content for that and for the district as well?
Absolutely. So we want to expand what we used to have as SES TV. We wanna expand that to where it was and grow it from there. But that's exactly, Seth, what we're looking for, is to have the students, you know, they're at, they're everywhere, so if we can get some video footage, you know, of the basketball game, or a track meet, or a concert, whatever it may be, and have them start developing that content, that's the ultimate goal. And with our streaming network, I mean, we, we can do that and broadcast that in a variety of different ways.
I have a question, Cameron. If we're talking about reallocating the money from the ROTC to this particular avenue, I guess the one question I would have is, if we get to choose one thing that we're gonna need new and different, is this the one?
So for, for me and the high school administration, this is the one. So they have, we've talked about a variety of programs and opportunities that we, in this idea of pathways. And so, you know, in terms of the discussions we've had, like one program that comes up quite a bit is biomedical. You know, do we wanna have, we have some medical detectives and a variety of other programs at the, or classes at the middle school level that could lead to it. But as we take a look at where our needs are, what we have access to through Polaris, what are things that we think would be good on campus, this is the one that we think is important for our kids moving forward.
Have the needs of the middle school and the elementary schools also been addressed if we have this one position we can hire?
I think in terms of what we're able to offer at the middle school, we've, we've, we have that in place. We have that in place through the satellite program, we have through collaboration with Polaris, where every student gets to go through the Project Lead the Way wheel. And as we take a look at the middle school schedule, there really is not a lot of room to add to that. So I feel comfortable with the experiences and opportunities we have at the middle school. And just as a side note, Brian Tamino, our supervisor of secondary curriculum, about a year ago, went through and did an audit of program of studies of middle schools and high schools all around our area. And we actually found that our middle school has a lot more offerings and choices than many of our other neighboring districts do. And in the high school, we're right there with them. I do feel that we need to take a look, moving forward at the elementary level. I, I do feel that that's, we've talked in the past, and we had a presentation from a community group about reintroducing supplemental opportunities that were there of clubs and, you know, service learning that's there. You know, an elementary school schedule, as, as many of you know, either your children were recently there or are still there, you know, it is pretty structured in terms of the time that's available, the time we have to provide core curriculum, as well as the encore opportunities. As we take a look at needs that are there besides the extracurricular opportunities, I think there is a need for some specific technology instruction. We have it integrated, and Dave has done a great job of using learning.com and our existing staff, but it's student-led and it's not explicit. I think as we take a look at, you know, I sent an email out to the parents and community about, you know, starting a diversity council, which we've got a huge response to, and looking at how do we expose our students to more of a world perspective, and a global perspective, and, and understanding different cultures and around the world. That's something that I think is a little lacking in our elementary schools as well. But in terms of, that is a heavier lift in terms of structures and schedules and programs that are in place, whereas the high school, I think this is an opportunity to move forward and add value to what we currently exist, or currently offering.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or feedback?
Yeah, I'm comfortable that we should continue to explore it. I know Berea has a Polaris satellite program that seems extremely similar, so we'll wanna make sure that we, we take advantage of not having to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
But there's no reason not to continue the exploration and see if we can't make it happen.
Well, thank you for the, the feedback. And if more questions come up, just let me know, I'd be happy to answer them. With that, that concludes my report to the community. Mr. Miko.
Next in our agenda is public comment. I don't have any slips. Does anyone have a burning desire to address us? Hearing none. We move on to Section 10, Approval of Minutes. The November 21st, 2019 Regular Board of Education meeting. All district video and audio recordings will be a permanent part of the minutes, and they are available on our website. Do I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Grozan, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? George, would you take the role?
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's awesome. Treasurer's report is next. You're up, George.
Thanks, Mr. Miko. A few items for your consideration tonight. The first one, Item A, Financial Report for the Month Ending November 30th, 2019, which can be found in Exhibit A. Item B is the Financial Report for the Month Ending December 31st, 2019, which can be found in Exhibit B. Student Activity Program Budget Purpose and Goals in Revision for School Year 20. Item C, which can be found, Exhibit C, is for the DECA program. It is increasing their budget from $36,500 to $56,500 for additional expected costs, which should be offset by additional revenues that they may receive. D is new funds for fiscal year 20. It is also related to E, Grant Approvals. We received three new grants over the past month, two from the Strongsville Education Foundation. The first one is for Social Emotional Learning Library Grant, which was applied by Kristin Gerbert, Guidance Counselor at Kinsner Elementary School, to build a resource library, to build a resource library for a group and individualized learning, for social emotional learning. And then the other was for the High School Track and Cross-Country Coaches, of $925 to attend a coach's clinic. And then the third grant is a school safety grant from the Ohio Governor's Office of $24,021.25, which is gonna go towards the, offset the cost of the bolo sticks that we recently bought. And Item F, the amended permanent appropriation measure, which can find Exhibit D, is to offset, it's, sorry, it's to account for the changes in the grant approvals and student activities adjustment. If there's no question, that concludes my report.
Any questions for George?
I will, who would like to tell us more about the Social Emotional Learning Library? Because I think that's important. It might be a small dollar amount, but it's, it will be a big deal for our students.
Yes, it is.
So that's a part of, the social emotional and the track are part of grants that the Strongsville Education Foundation give. There's educator grants. There's track one, is there's a Rattamaker Miller Grant that is specifically allocated towards athletics and coaching, development, and training. But in terms of the social emotional library, that's something that, if memory serves, that's at Kinsner Elementary School, I believe, where the, the grant was placed, and gives the guidance counselor, our guidance counselors, the tools and resources, whether it be in classroom lessons, or small group work, or individual work, to help proactively, and sometimes reactively, develop the skills that are necessary, whether it be through stress, or anxiety, or other of those life situations that our young students are going through, where they can use some support. So it gives teachers, and it gives our counselors the tools to have a conversation starter and a dialogue with our students about some of the social emotional learning that needs to occur, or to continue to foster.
And we should, we would be remiss not to thank the Strongsville Education Foundation for those grants.
Yes.
I'm assuming.
Yes.
Kinsner will share their library with other elementary schools, but would be even neater as if, Kirsten, right?
Yes.
She could share her application with the other guidance counselors at the elementary schools, and I'm sure the Education Foundation would consider those grant requests.
You're up, Cameron.
All right, so under timely information, there is one item for your consideration. The Annual Ohio High School Athletic Association Membership for the 2020-21 School Year. Be it resolved upon the recommendation that membership in the OHSAA for the 2020-21 School Year, it requires the Strongsville City Schools to conduct athletic programs in accordance with the Constitution, Bylaws, Regulations, Business Rules, Interpretations, and Rulings of OHSAA, and there is no cost to the district, and it can be found in Exhibit E. The only other item that I wanna share is just some upcoming dates in the next month. So as you can see, we've got a talent show at the high school coming up in a week, as well as Rockin' at the Rec for our PTA Council, a Pink Out theme. It's very exciting times on Friday, February, oh, it's a Valentine's Day dance. I apologize, I'm a little slow on the dates there. And then Monday, February 17th, for President's Day, we will not have school. Just reminder to look at the district calendar, it's on the website. We've got the times and dates listed up there on the screen as a reference as well, that we are getting into the second and final round of parent-teacher conferences. So I would encourage everybody, whether you're an elementary school parent that schedules a conference or arena-style at the high school, to go, attend, engage, get involved, look at how we can continue to partner for the best interest of your children and our students moving forward. So those dates are there. Reminder that school is in session during those dates, and we hope to see a lot of parents out for our spring conferences. And unless there's any questions, we'll move on with the rest of the report. Okay, we do not have any items under Business Services for this month, but I've asked Erin Green, Director of Curriculum, to come up with her report.
Good evening. Welcome to our new board members. I do have three items tonight for your consideration, and then also just a quick update on our full-day kindergarten program. So the first item for your consideration is the Strongsville Middle School Program of Studies. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Strongsville Middle School Curriculum Guide for the 2021 School Year be approved. Item two is the same thing, except for the Strongsville High School Program of Studies. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Strongsville High School Program of Studies for the 2021 School Year be approved. And the third item this evening is for an overnight trip for the Strongsville High School Varsity Gymnastics Team to travel to Cincinnati to participate in the Win the Day Invitational, which takes place January 31st through February 1st. Transportation will be by school bus, expenses paid by the students, and from fundraising activities. Questions on any of those three items? Okay, and I just wanted to give you a quick update. As you probably know, we had our full-day kindergarten process start last Thursday. We had a parent meeting. We had probably between 250 to 300 parents show up, and then we opened the next morning at 8:00 a.m., Friday morning, the full-day intent forms. At our last look today, we had 230 students that were signed up for full-day kindergarten, which, similar numbers to last year. Were not quite as high as we were, but we typically get students that add on. So if you still wanna apply to be full-day kindergarten, it's on our website. You absolutely can continue to do that. Also on that website, on strongnet.org, you'll find the request form, you'll find all the information, the dates about the deposits, and then just other important dates for our kindergarten parents. What this looks like is that every building should have a section or more of the full-day kindergarten, which has grown tremendously. I think this is our seventh year doing it. We started with, I believe, four full-day sections, and last year, we were at 11. So it's definitely a need, something we wanna continue to offer, of course, and we're excited for next year already. Any questions on, on the full-day kindergarten? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Erin. We do not have any items under Student Services, and, but Human Resources, our Assistant Superintendent Jenny Felko with her report. Jenny?
Thank you, Dr. Raiba. I have the following items for your consideration under Human Resources this evening. Under E1, the resignation of a leadership team member, resignations for non-certificated staff. Under E2, retirements for certificated staff. Under E3, an appointment for certificated staff, and appointments for non-certificated staff. Appointments for certificated substitutes, appointments for non-certificated substitutes, appointments for certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion, appointments for non-certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion. Under E4, changes in hours for non-certificated staff. Under E5, change in salary for certificated staff. Under E6, changes in status for non-certificated staff. Change in status for non-certificated, recall from reduction in force status. recall from reduction in force status. Under E7, stipends for our professional development from December 20th. Under E8, medical leaves for certificated staff, and medical leaves for non-certificated staff. Under E9, unpaid leave for certificated staff, and unpaid leave for non-certificated staff. Under E10, we have volunteers, chaperones, and mentors. And finally, under E11, we have one correction to a retirement that retired, actually, we had her originally for May 29th, and she has retired as of January 2nd instead. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Mrs. Pelco? So I'm sure we look forward to congratulating our retirees at the May meeting, but we congratulate, at the very least, we congratulate Eve Hollander right now.
We do not have any items under Technology, and that concludes my report for the month.
Very good. Report on Polaris Career Center. We had our organizational meeting last week. Mr. Tom Herbster, who is the board member from North Olmsted, was elected president, and I was proud to receive the confirmation of my fellow board members, and I'll be vice president at Polaris this year. And we're looking forward to a great year. We are at what we consider full enrollment for Polaris. It's probably the first time that has happened, if not ever, for a long, long time, and obviously the new building goes a long way towards that. But some programs, there's going to be a little play, but we have full enrollment as far as applications are concerned. So that's very exciting. Any students in Strongsville who still are interested in Polaris, you better get your applications in soon. And then we're looking forward to the March 5th meeting at 7:00 p.m. If anybody shows up here, you're in the wrong place, because the March 5th meeting will be at Polaris. And it'll be an opportunity for everyone in Strongsville to experience the new building, so we're excited about that. Report on legislation. The main report I wanted to give is that, right now, as of, right now, the legislature has until February 1st to figure out what they want to do with Ed Choice vouchers, and there's a lot of discussion that something needs to be done, as Dr. Reiba discussed the problem at earlier board meetings. So we think the legislature is going to act before February 1st, but we shall see. The issue again being that the way the rules work, more and more school districts are coming under the rules that parents can take advantage of Ed Choice scholarships. Currently, Strongsville doesn't have that issue, but it is something we're aware of. If the state would choose to fund those scholarships a different way, I don't think we would have a different discussion, let's put it that way. But the way they fund it is by taking the money from the home district. So, and they, and they don't take the same amount that they give. So there's a definite unfairness to it, which is why it's a hot-button topic for public school districts in Ohio. So we'll continue to watch it and advocate for Strongsville's best interest. And then as far as Cup Patterson is concerned, the work continues, but there really hasn't been much to report since the last meeting. And that completes my report on legislation. Board Liaison Reports. Who would like to talk about City Council?
There have been two City Council meetings between the first of the year and tonight. At the first of those, council voted a new president. Matt Schoenhut will serve as president for this year, and Gordon Short will serve as president pro temp. And then at the second meeting last night, two things maybe of note to the community. One, council's in process on potentially extending Folds Parkway, so that's still pending. The second is, they're also looking to refurbish the clock tower at the corner of 82 and 42, and they assured me that would not impact traffic flow at all. So, that's what's relevant at the moment. That concludes my report. Thanks.
Strongsville Education Foundation?
I think they had their last meeting January 9th, and that was the day that we were sworn in, so I was not in attendance, so I'm going to let Dr. Reiba.
They did. They, we did meet. They approved a couple more grants that we'll see at future meetings, but they spent a lot of time talking about the structure for the upcoming Jockeys and Juleps event and sponsorship opportunities. So I'm sure in the coming weeks, they'll start sharing how to get tickets if you want to be a sponsor. So it was pretty much a work session to finalize the items for the event.
And who would like to do PTA?
I will do PTA. Council PTA had their last meeting on January 9th. Couple things. Our next meeting is February 6th. It is an evening meeting. It is at the middle school, and that is when we will be honoring our recipients of the Ohio Achievement Award. It is at 6:30 at Strongsville Middle School. There is no charge. Anyone is invited to come, and you can RSVP to Stacy Herschkowitz at S-T-A-C-I-E-L underscore B at MSN.com. Stacy's right there, if anyone needs to tell her that they're coming. Also, on February 8th, our Strongsville Early Childhood PTA is having their third annual prom event. It's from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Strongsville Rec Center. It's a dance geared towards preschool children and their families. Tickets include dinner, entertainment, and more. There will be two grand prize raffles, where you get a chance to win 10 Park Hopper passes to Walt Disney World. Tickets are $12 for 12 months and up, and adults are $15. Those are also available on their website, SCCPTA.org, a little easier to remember. And last but not least, January 29th, Moraski is having a fundraiser at Five Guys from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
January what?
January 29th. Five Guys. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Laura. Before we move on, speaking of Board Liaison Reports and City Council, I just want to welcome Mr. Kaminski to our meeting and thank him for coming, and Mrs. Kosak to our meeting, and thank you for coming. Are there any other City Council members hiding? We welcome you all. I want to thank you for coming and maintaining that strong board-council relationship. It's very important to us, as I know it is to you. And Mrs. Kaminski, this does not count as date night. Hold out for dinner. Thank you. Moving on to Board Committee Reports. Finance Committee, I assume there's no report. The next meeting for the Finance Committee is February 10th. Policy Committee, there is no report. Our next meeting is to be announced once we get our next batch of policies to work on. We do have a second reading of policy later in the agenda. Facilities Committee, I'm assuming there's no report, and our next meeting is January 30th at 6:30 p.m. in the admin offices. And for Business Advisory Council, we did meet last Friday on January 10th, had a very good meeting, and continued our work on the, what is the name of the program I'm brain hiccuping on?
There's not a name to it.
No wonder I can't remember it. But it's a project for, to tie in with the Ohio Means Jobs Job Ready Seal, and we're doing a lot of really good work that I'm excited about, that combines our educating team at the high school, along with some business advisors, to work on a new program that I think will appeal to a lot of kids.
Yeah, absolutely.
And our next meeting is April 17th, 2020. I will share that the people currently assigned to these different liaisons and board committees, now that we're at full strength, we're going to give them all to Seth, and
Jennifer, sorry, thank you.
But we will discuss some ideas to share the duties, and to share the exciting things that happen at these different, with these different projects, and we will then come back at a later board meeting and make that a public announcement. Moving on to our Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of Consent Calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing on this agenda with asterisks, which items constitute the Consent Calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board or the superintendent requests that such items be removed and voted upon separately. Do I have a request for anything to be voted on separately? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Grozan, second by Mrs. Hausum. Mr. Onagostu?
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Section 18, Board Policies. We have a number of policies on second reading. They will be up for adoption at our next board meeting. 19, Board of Education Other. Do you want to start at your end? Do you have any others?
Just the idea that the Strongsville Education Foundation has the Night at the Races or Jockeys and Juleps, and it's a very, very important item. They fundraise from this item, and it's greatly important for the Strongsville Education Foundation. So it's May 1, and please, please, everybody come.
How do you get tickets?
What's your website?
They're on the website, so if you go to strongnet.org, you can see a link for the Strongsville Education Foundation, you can get tickets there.
I'll buy a table. Or you can see George. Did George just offer to buy everyone a table?
I think so.
Yes. You too.
Do you have any?
Just Night at the Races for our Strongsville Athletic Boosters. That is February 22nd, and you can see me for tickets. You can see our website, it's on Facebook. And the other thing is, our Music Boosters is doing one last push. They have been fundraising for a while now for new uniforms, and they've had their uniforms, correct me if I'm wrong, 16 years, I think I read today? So they take really good care of their uniforms, and they do represent us on the football field, in the parades. They really do a great job with, you know, preserving what they have. So they are doing one last fundraiser effort for new uniforms, and I saw that form on their Facebook page today, where they're just asking for any type of donation.
Michelle? Seth?
No.
So I will just make sure to announce that January 25th, the new scoreboard will be in effect.
If that's Friday, yes. Is that Friday?
No, that's Saturday.
22nd, 23rd, 24th.
January 24th, our new scoreboard will be in effect, so make sure to come to the basketball game.
The boys.
The boys, and make sure to come to every game after that, not just to see the scoreboard, but to see the student athletes on the floor. But it will be exciting, and, you know, as we talk about the idea of a media program and all of these things, there'll be some synergy there. We'll be able to celebrate our students and watch the sports a lot easier.
And if I could add to that, Mr. Miko, the boys are playing Friday night, and our girls are playing at home on Saturday afternoon, so if you can't be there on Friday, you could catch the games on Saturday.
Or go to both, but you have to go home in between. Hearing no other others, Meeting Notification. A regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, February 6th, 2020, 6:00 p.m. in the Auditorium of Strongsville Middle School. That is a change of the normal location, so come to the meeting, but stay for the PTA Founder's Day afterwards. And then a regular Board of Education meeting will be held Thursday, February 20th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. back here in the admin building on Cook Avenue. We do have need for executive session for the following reasons.
To consider the employment, discipline, and compensation of a public employee or official, as well as to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Bissel. You're up, George.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
We will enter executive session at 8:10. We have no business afterwards. Have a great evening, and we'll see you next time.